Until today.
Naomi Judd was 76. You're listening to Here and Now.
Workers at one company see workers at another unionized, and they decide they want a union too. And now they have evidence that it's possible. And that just kind of keeps going across companies, across industries. So I guess the question is, are we at a moment where that has really taken hold?
I'm Sabrina Tavernisi. That's today on The Daily from The New York Times.
Weekday evenings at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is supported in part by A N Culbertson &amp; Company, independent wealth managers helping clients protect, grow, and transfer assets for 25 years. Fee-only advisors Charlottesville, anculbertson.com. And from Wild Birds Unlimited Charlottesville, bird food, feeders, bird baths, gifts, and guidance. 29 North near Rio Road. More information at mywbu.com/charlottesville.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Angie, formerly Angie's List, dedicated to helping homeowners tackle home projects, from everyday repairs to dream remodels. Reviews, pricing, and booking are at angie.com or on the Angie app. And Mass Cultural Council, committed to supporting a diverse, inclusive, and anti-racist cultural sector in Massachusetts. More about their racial equity plan and grant making to serve artists and organizations is at massculturalcouncil.org.
It's Here and Now. Latoya Ruby Fraser is a MacArthur Fellow. She's known for her photos of communities in turmoil, her hometown of Braddock, Pennsylvania, autoworkers in Lordstown, Ohio, and most recently Flint, Michigan. Now, the story of Flint is familiar. Officials changed the water source during a state budget crisis eight years ago, and that caused catastrophic lead and other contamination to the water. Fraser's Flint photos are on exhibit at the Gordon Parks Foundation in Pleasantville, New York, and are the focus of the upcoming book Flint is Family in Three Acts. Karen Michelle has this report.
It's mostly women, black women, some on horseback, others standing on a field of grass, that a viewer first encounters in Latoya Ruby Fraser's photography exhibition. There's an image of a woman holding a sign proclaiming free water in huge red letters, and another of her laying out her prayer rug in front of the machine that made that water, the atmospheric water generator. On the facing wall, there's a photo of the man who brought that literally lifesaving device, Moses West, spraying water on a group of frolicking children.
I remember standing there. I was halfway on the street in the sidewalk. I decided to load my camera with color film. And as I put that film in and started looking through the viewfinder, it was, I hesitated to press the shutter because I was, had so much emotion. But I knew to click it right at that moment of celebration because it was the most that I had ever seen Amber and Shay and their children so carefree.
Shay Cobb and Amber Hassan are poets, mothers, and best friends from Flint, Michigan, who became Fraser's collaborators during the five years she spent on the project, starting in April 2016, showing her the key sights, introducing her to their wide community, gaining trust. At first, Hassan was reluctant to get involved.
I was like, uh, I kind of don't want to do it either because we were so used to people coming in and basically they came in for the shock value of the story and to do this, you know, look at poor Flint kind of narrative. And I wasn't really interested in being a part of that because that's not what the story is.
Initially an assignment for Elle Magazine, Fraser wasn't sure whether to take on the project. In the end, she made a deal. The feature would be ad-free.
I was like, right, this will get me to a large audience of women in a place like a health and beauty fashion magazine where it's least expected. And since it is the first of its kind, people will be surprised and they will respond. And ultimately, they'll remember, the water crisis isn't over.
The project is divided into three sections, three acts. The first focuses on Shay Cobb and her many roles as mother, daughter, hairstylist, school bus driver, musician, and poet. In the second act, we see her family on horseback. They've moved to Cobb's father's land in Mississippi and clean water. Ultimately, though, they return to Flint, where in Act Three, Amber Hassan has returned from an extended visit to Puerto Rico with a solution to their tainted water in tow, a machine that makes clean water, the atmospheric water generator. There are many photographs of town residents posing by it with water jugs or hoses in hand, some in their Sunday finest.
When you think about water, you don't consider government.
In the back room of the exhibition, there's a video, stills from Flint's family and the voice of Shay Cobb.
When you think about water, you don't consider poison because poison isn't something you consider for yourself.
Fraser knows her work is important as social commentary.
I'm not making these singular beautiful objects. These are photographs to tell a story about urgent issues in the 21st century.
For the photographer, the work was a spiritual calling. The resulting book, literally to her, a Bible, a testament to what community can accomplish.
It's really important that I'm showing that type of solidarity and love across religion, across sexuality, across race. It is so essential to my work. And I'm trying, as an artist in my lifetime, to leave behind what I see my work as a human document for humanity, for this country, to transcend the barriers that have kept us apart continuously.
For Gordon Parks Foundation curator Michal Raz Russo, it's Fraser's ability to give voice to her subjects, having them active participants, that's key to her work as a documentarian.
She shows how, for example, you still have a wedding in the middle of a water crisis. It's important to show those images. The images of triumph are just as important as the images of the struggle. And that's one way that she gives a voice to those individuals and those families. And that's very different than what you saw in mass media.
With every step toward the unknown, your love grows outside its comfort zone.
Amber Hassan and Shay Cobb give thanks for Latoya Ruby Fraser's work was the only thing they could think to give. A poem, Here and by Hassan.
Some angels come with cameras and compassion for the masses. And to meet one is to see how people are good.
For Here and Now, I'm Karen Michelle.
To see some of Latoya Ruby Fraser's photos from the exhibit Flint is Family in Three Acts, go to our website hereandnow.org. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Indeed, committed to helping businesses streamline the hiring process. Indeed works to help businesses attract, interview, and hire candidates in one place. More at indeed.com/NPR.
This week on This American Life, a guy reached out to us saying, I have this crazy story.
And today is about to be like a million times crazier. Two weeks ago, my life was normal. Working for Amazon, I was a normal person.
Another producer's voicemail, he said he'd just become a millionaire in a week.
Which is insane. And the story is like so much crazier than what I'm even saying.
So I gave him a call.
This American Life, Monday evenings at 8:00 and Saturday afternoons at 3:00 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is supported by Renaissance School, a college preparatory program in Charlottesville for high-ability students, teaching motivated learners in grades 8 through 12. Learn more at renasanceschool.org. And from Garth Newell Music Center, presenting live and live streaming concerts throughout the year. Program details at garthnewell.org. We're also supported by listeners who donate to Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond.
The Roanoke City Council regular session for May the 2nd, 2022 is hereby called to order. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Here.
Mr. Bespin?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Lee, Mayor Lee.
Here. And of course, Ms. President. Today, we're pleased to recognize and have an invocation delivered by the Reverend Alexander McPhail, Rector of Christ Episcopal Church here in Roanoke. Reverend, we're delighted to have you. And following the invocation, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as Reverend McPhail comes to us.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. And do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail. All which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled session for Roanoke City Council. We had some briefings earlier today. And this will be almost considered a separate second session. All right. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 AM. And Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, I have some announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Billing and Fire Code Board of Appeals. There's one vacancy, and we're looking for an architect to, to take that vacancy. The Board of Zoning Appeals is one vac-- we have one vacancy. The Roanoke Arts Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. The Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, one vacancy. And Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, one vacancy. For any and all of the vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application. Now, if you can't get through or do that, then just call the clerk's office. And they will guide you through a very simple process. But we welcome all of our citizens who want to step forward and help us on any boards and commissions that we have. So I would encourage you to submit that application and help us govern this seven-time All-American City. All right, I have some presentations and acknowledgements. And I will come down and meet some of our citizens here. Christine Geis, is Christine here? Christine, come down. I'll meet you there at the little podium. For the recognition. Thank you. I think I got it. Tell you what, it's amazing I can have people right in front of me. I got it. I got it. I got it. All right, we want to recognize members of our community here that makes a difference. This is Resilience Week. And we're pleased to recognize the work that has gone in to, to doing that. And we've been a resilient people. If you look at what's happened and what we've been through and through it all, we're still standing. So we thank God for that. There's a proclamation from the mayor's office. Whereas the City of Roanoke recognizes that a strong society depends on supporting the development of a strong brain architecture, health, and well-being of children to create a foundation for lifelong productivity and responsible citizenship. Whereas adverse childhood experiences or aces are stressful or traumatic experiences, such as household violence, substance abuse, neglect, divorce, incarceration of a parent, or sexual and physical assault that can disrupt the safe, stable, and nurturing environments children need to strive. We're so pleased that adverse child experiences can cause toxic stress, which can negatively affect brain development and lead to a lifetime of physical, mental, economic, educational, and social challenges. Whereas aces have been linked to public health problems such as obesity, addiction, hypertension, mental illness, and shortened life expectancy. Whereas trauma-informed care can bring greater understanding, more effective support services to children, adults, and communities affected by toxic stress, and is a principle-based culture change process aimed at shifting a system or community philosophy, policies, programs, and practices to be more emphatic and focused on promoting resiliency. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network and the Resiliency Collective are initiatives of community stakeholders dedicated to developing a community-wide effort to end childhood trauma by building awareness around children's childhood trauma, resilience in the aftermath of trauma, and resilience among all of our citizens. Now therefore, I Sherman P. Lee, Senior, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, encourage citizens to become informed, really, about adverse childhood experiences and toxic stress, promote prevention, healing, and resiliency in children and adults to build a stronger and healthier Roanoke. And do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through the 7th throughout this great seven-time All-American City as Resiliency Week. All right. Thank you all so much. And let me present this proclamation to you. Thank you. You have the mic and talk a little bit about, more about that.
Okay, certainly. First off, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, the Resiliency Collective. We appreciate Mayor Lee and the council members and the council staff for helping us make the statewide initiative official in the City of Roanoke for the third year in a row. Like Mr. Mayor Lee mentioned, resiliency is something that we can all learn more about. We can share it out. It's accessible to all of us. And everything that we've been through in the last couple of years, we all need it. We already have resilience. All of us have resilience. But this is an opportunity for us to practice our resilience, maintain our own resilience, share it out in a conversation with a friend in need or just anyone. We are offering many trainings this week. There's a schedule up at roanokresilience.com. I mean, pardon me, dot org, if you'd like to check that out. And we're in partnership with Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network. I'd like to give Decka Knight a moment to say a word also. But I'm Christine Geist, and on behalf of the Resiliency Collective, which is made up of many organizations outside of ours, TAP, United Way, we have wonderful partners, and we couldn't do it without them. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Lee.
Thank you. Hold on there. We'll get a photo off here. Councilor Cobb, would you take another photo? I'll picture here.
Decka, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay, I'll come in.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network, I just want to mirror what Christine said. We have over 25 community partners that work with us to inform the community about trauma-informed care and how to change our culture and our community to best support kids and adults who have been through difficult things. So coming together during this week is wonderful for the Trauma-Informed Community Network. And we're actually one of 26 Trauma-Informed Community Networks across the state of Virginia. There's one in every medium or large-sized city. And so the network is strong to build resiliency among our youth and among our community. So thank you, Mayor Lee.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you. Madam clerk, I left my paper there. Could you call on the representatives for Mental Health and Awareness Month?
Oh, yes, that's going to be Angela Vernon. And I think Fay Gilchrist. No Fay, just Angela? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Call in just a few minutes.
Okay, absolutely.
Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is essential to our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our employees, families, communities, schools, and businesses. Whereas prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, nearly 50 million adult Americans experienced a mental illness, and over 27 million of these adults did not receive treatment. Whereas stigma, stereotypes, and fears of discrimination associated with mental illnesses often keep people from seeking treatment that it could improve their quality of life. Whereas Mental Health America and its affiliates across the nation will observe May as Mental Health Awareness Month by spreading the word that mental health is something that everyone really should care about. Whereas the President and United States Congress recently announced a national mental health strategy that would strengthen system capacity, connect more Americans to mental health, connect them, connect more to mental health care, and create a continuum of mental health support, transforming the country's health and social services infrastructure in order to address mental health holistically and equitably. Whereas the City of Roanoke recognizes the impact of awareness and education, access to services, and the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of a trauma-informed approach throughout the system of care. And whereas the City of Roanoke and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening the resiliency of city employees and members of the community, enabling everyone to achieve his or her full potential and enrich the culture of our organization and community. Now therefore, I Sherman P. Lee, Senior, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, join the community, state, and nation in raising awareness of mental health issues and services, and do hereby proclaim May 2022 throughout this great seven-time All-American City as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'm so pleased to present this to Angela Vernon. And I'm so pleased to present this to Angela Vernon, HR.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Trish White Boyd, and members of council, this certainly wouldn't be possible without the folks behind me. So I'd like to recognize our committee. The City of Roanoke does have a mental health and strategy committee, and if those members would stand, so we do a photo op, I'd love to get everyone.
Come on up. Come on up. Photo op time. See, I'll look back on one of these days when I'm no longer down here and say, hey, we did that. How you doing? Good to see you. Hey, sorry to see you. Good to see you, Jane. How you doing? Springy. All right, how you doing?
I don't know. You want me to tighten up?
Tighten up.
We got to tighten up.
All right, get in here somewhere now. Go ahead, go.
Yeah, I was trying to turn somebody's.
Yeah, turn that way.
Yeah, turn that way.
Oh, I don't hear you.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so this is, yeah, this will probably work a little. All right.
Thank you all for all that you do. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Just like to share, good afternoon again, and certainly thank you for this opportunity. Just want to make you aware, on behalf of the Mental Health and Well-being Strategy Committee, we do appreciate you recognizing and declaring this month as Mental Health and Awareness Month. As we know, the pandemic really has sort of brought mental health to the forefront as it has negatively affected a lot of us. And so I'll share with you, and last year, our city manager came to us at our leadership retreat and asked us as directors, what has changed in our organization? What is different now in light of the pandemic? And it was fairly unanimous across the leadership that mental health was an opportunity for us. So earlier this year, we were tasked with launching a mental health and well-being initiative, if you will, and so that's what this committee of employees has been working on. We have upwards of about 34 employees serving on this committee, and they have been very busy, busy bees, I will share with you. We've had a event in March, if you will, a webinar on trauma-informed care by Lee Frazier from Lewis Gale Behavioral Health. We've also had a workshop on anxiety and depression and addressing that. And on this Thursday, May 5th, at 9:00 a.m., we will host a virtual webinar on the four stages of psychological safety with author Dr. Timothy R. Clark. So we know that psychological safety is a condition in which human beings feel included, safe to learn, safe to contribute, and safe to challenge the status quo, all without fear of being embarrassed, marginalized, or punished in some way. And this concept connects nicely to all the work that the city is currently doing to address the city's equity and inclusion efforts, increased process improvements, and innovation throughout the organization, and the focus on department equity plans. I'll also share with you that we do have a Mental Health Matters Expo that's going to be held later this month on May 18th, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Burgland Center in the Burgland Hall. And there, you're going to find four different categories, community mental health providers and resources, connection between physical and mental health, self-care, we'll actually have chiropractors, acupunctures, massages, and a lot of interactive activities. We'll have animals, yes, you heard me, animals will be on site. We'll have large giant puzzles, color activities for employees, and so a lot of different things going on at that particular event. And lastly, human resources along with the committee is also partnering with Decka Knight, so it's great seeing her here this afternoon, of community or connected community consulting firm, to introduce and provide trauma-informed care for our leadership as well as for our employees. And currently, our own 911 manager, Sonya Roman, is currently working with Decka Knight with her team. So we're excited to be able to bring that to the entire organization as a whole. Certainly, we know that individuals have life situations, past or present, that may include some form of trauma, either from an event, a series of events, circumstances that may have occurred. So that can be physically or emotionally harmful and affecting one's mental, physical, social, and emotional or spiritual well-being. So we just want to ensure our workforce is informed and identify practices to advance trauma-informed approaches in employee management. So certainly, I want to thank you again this afternoon, and I want to thank the committee for the support and the work that they're doing. So, thank you.
Uh, Miss Roman, stand up a minute. You all, if you haven't had a chance to see the 911 center that's been built out off of 460, you ought to go by there and visit. I had a chance to tour that, and it's a top-notch facility, and so go out and see it. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Are any citizens signed up to speak, Madam Clerk?
I have two citizens. I don't know if either are here, but it is Crystal Bolton. Oh, she is here. Okay, Crystal Bolton and Elizabeth Wade.
All right, let me make this statement. The city council sets this time as a priority for citizens, all citizens, to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And so with only two speakers, they can have five minutes each. All right? Can you call them up again?
Yes, Crystal. Crystal Bolton.
Hello. I am Crystal Bolton, and I am a small business owner in downtown Roanoke, and I am Bayou Snowballs, which is right there on the front of Campbell, and I've been there almost 11 years, and I enjoy being downtown. I'm a huge advocate for Roanoke City. I enjoy having people come from all over the state and other states, and just to tell them about Roanoke. And I feel like we have such a beautiful downtown, and I've seen a lot of changes in the past 11 years, and not all of them positive. And I'm not here to point fingers or to name-call or anything else, because there's a lot of that that goes on down there. I'm here because I can't take it anymore. We have no presence, hardly, no disrespect, a police presence down there. We need some officers down there. In the first five years I was down there, we had the bike officers, they were there all the time. And unfortunately, I know that they're short-staffed, and I get that, but I don't know where the city is with hiring security. I know when I first opened down there, the Market Building had security, but we don't have that anymore. I can tell you, I'm sure the 911 has probably blocked my number by now, because I have to call them all the time. In the fall, December, I probably called them every Sunday, you know, and it's, everyone wants to say, oh, it's the people who aren't sheltered, or, you know, homeless, or whatever, but it's not that. It's people who have nothing else to do but come down there and wreak havoc on the public. And, you know, they're out there, I know there's, you know, you can't really do anything about panhandling, but I feel like you should be able to. And I don't know who makes those changes or what has to happen, but something has got to stop this downtown. Two Wednesdays ago, I was in there, crowded people, there was a huge conference at the Hotel Roanoke, and, you know, when I start seeing them argue across the street, I call 911, because I know what's going to happen next. I've seen it way too many times, they're going to start fighting. Well, I didn't that day, because, you know, they say, don't, you know, try not to call unless they're actually, you know, throwing punches or what have you. So, okay, so I am making milkshakes, I have my back to the door, next thing I know, there's these two people fighting, they started across the street, and they made arguing, they made their way into my front door. I had children sitting out front with families, and, you know, I was embarrassed and angry, and I'm just not sure what we can do, how we can fix it, but something has got to be fixed. You know, the city's spent a ton of money fixing downtown, and it's beautiful. I mean, I can't tell you the compliments that we all get about how beautiful our downtown area is, but it's kind of losing it, I'll be honest with you. The smell down there is atrocious. My patio, you know, two months ago, I had a lady come back into my shop because she found the needle out there right on my patio, and I know it wasn't there the night before because I had cleaned and swept. And so I'm just not sure what's happening and how we can go about fixing it, and I just want you to all know that I'm willing to be a participant in that and to help and to continue to advocate for our city. But my lease is up in August, and if there's not changes, then I don't know that I can stay there. I certainly can't stay there and pay the rent that I'm paying, and I know that's not your all's problem, but if people don't want to come downtown because of the things that are happening, then I can't afford to be there. And two years ago, I almost amputated my left foot, so I feel very vulnerable. I can't run. I don't have the flexion to walk very fast, to run, to move. So, you know, I've had to call the 911, the non-emergency number, to have someone walk me to my car just two weeks ago, and my car was right outside my door, and that's not okay. And, you know, you want to promote female-owned business, but how do you go about doing that when you can't feel safe in the areas that you love and you want to be in? So I just, you know, just wanted to bring that to your attention, and to hopefully, you know, if I can do anything to help, I'll do it. But we have to do something. So, thank you.
Hold on. Well, I'm sorry that you have to endure that. Is it generous Sunday, though? Do you just reference in one particular?
No, no, I can give you a list of dates, times. You know, it's any day of the week. Like today, I'm closed on Mondays usually, but I've been open for several Mondays because it's been pretty warm. But, you know, any day, any time, it doesn't matter, especially if it's warm, they have nothing else to do. And again, it's not, it's not really the homeless people. It's, like I said, it's people who have nothing else to do. And I'm not sure how do you, I mean, you can't tell people, oh, you can't hang out down there, but if they're fighting and yelling, you know, I know what comes next, and they do, they get violent. I don't want to see that. I wouldn't want my child to see that. And, you know, they're yelling profanities, if you, like, I walked to the trash room, and there's two people following me down the sidewalk. I mean, so, yeah, I don't feel safe, and I don't think it's okay. And like I said, I called the police to come watch me to my car that was literally right outside my door, and I'm sorry that I haven't come forth before now, and I'm kind of embarrassed that I'm having to do it now. But before, I was fearless, I mean, absolutely fearless. And not every woman is as brave as I am. I mean, I'll fight you, I don't care, you know, but I am not going to continue to allow these people down there to ruin my life and to, you know, be disrespectful, not to just me as my business, but to every business owner down there, and honestly, to you all. I mean, it is, it's disrespect, and, you know, I don't know any other, I mean, I have a lot of other words for it, but, you know, we just have to clean it, clean it up somehow.
Crystal, what's the name of your business?
Bayou Snowballs, B-A-Y-O-U, Snowballs.
Any members of council have any questions before Ms. Price?
I joined with my colleagues and saying, so sorry that you're experiencing this, and certainly, you know, it is a concern that we all have. Is there any kind of associa, I know at one point, there was a downtown association organization, does that still exist, or is it helpful?
Yeah, well, there was DRI, and they do.
Yeah, DRI, I was going to ask about separately. But is there any other organization?
Not really. When I first signed my lease at the Market Building, we had security there for at least the first five years, and I'm not sure what happened with that. I mean, of course, there's not that many businesses there now, but that's not my fault. I shouldn't have to suffer because, you know, other people decided to leave, or other people, you know, it's hard for me. I was out of my shop for seven months because of my leg break, and so, sure, am I behind on rent? Sure, who wouldn't be? You have no businesses downtown as much, they're starting to come back, so sure, business is picking up, but unfortunately, you know, families aren't going to want to come down there. Who wants to come down there when you're, you know, you're sitting there eating ice cream and someone comes up to you, and it's constant.
So, yeah, and you brought up DRI, so I wanted to ask separately those two questions. So have you approached them as far as, is there something collaboratively the businesses can do to help support one another?
Well, I feel like we do all that we can. I mean, outside of going out there with a stick ourselves, I mean, I hate to say that, but, I mean, you know, what do you do? I mean, if you have recommendations, I mean, I'll take it back, but we have to, you know, when I have to call either the police to walk me to my car, or to call Fork in the Market, because I know the cooks are working back there, to come and walk me to my car, I mean, I feel like that, that's pretty serious.
Absolutely. And like I said, I know that this is a concern that we all have, and I'm sure the mayor's going to say, you know, we'll certainly look to our city manager to see, how can we work collaboratively? I frequent the city in the square building quite often, so I'm very familiar with the concerns you're bringing up, and the fact that we, you know, we're all still looking for solutions, so thank you so very much for coming forward.
We do have a beautiful downtown, and we should be very proud of it.
Absolutely.
Because it really is, it's absolutely beautiful, and when you go to some bigger cities, they don't have what we have, and so that's why I, you know, I want to continue to be a light down there, but, you know, it's kind of dark right now, and it's dimming, and more and more each day.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and I want to, excuse me, refer you to our city manager there, and he will ask, and the police chief is here in the audience too, so we'd ask that somebody look into that, and especially those hours that you highlighted, to make sure that not only you're safe, but other citizens down there are all attending, please, to be safe. So we all regret that this has happened, but we do what we can to try to change the surrounding. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a picture? No.
That was good.
If you got the camera, I'd get a picture.
Right, you're the advocate, yes.
He won't hesitate to go.
I'll come right down there in a minute and get a joke.
Yeah, Joe had the camera, he was ready.
I'm ready.
We'll take a picture.
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, when, and I'm losing a little bit track of time here, but last year, when we had a number of gun violence incidents downtown, we met with the businesses, and the businesses really care about our downtown, and they want to see it be successful, and they were very proactive in coming up with a lot of solutions, but we recognize it's got to be a collaborative effort with everybody. I know there's some talk about downtown ambassadors, and I think that program is probably going to launch sometime soon, which might help with addressing some of this. It doesn't take the place of security, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And I also know that, I just hear countless incidents of, and these are people that are just, they have bad behaviors, there's no other way of saying it, and they're intentional in their bad behaviors, from even at night, coming along, the planters that are so beautifully planted with gorgeous flowers and plants, and they just intentionally pull them up and throw them onto the ground, and I can't tell you how many times that's happened. And, you know, we can't have, can't have people watching people all the time, but hearing about these little things that happen and how we can address them is really important. So I just want to thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Wade. Not sure if she's here. Doesn't look like.
Doesn't look like she's here.
All right. Does that conclude it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're now down to item number four, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please call it over?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, let's move now to our regular agenda. Item number five is public hearings. We have none today. Item number six is petitions and communications. A transmittal of the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Propose Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget. Scott Ramsburg, Cable Access Director, spokesperson. This is sponsored by the city manager. So there's one measure which is a resolution.
Move the resolution back in.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution approving the recommendation of the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee to approve the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 for the operation of the regional government and educational access station, Roanoke Valley Television, RV TV Channel 3, and for the city to provide partial funding.
All right, are there any questions or comments by members of council?
Mr. Ramsburg is present here. I don't know if he has anything he would want to add or ask any questions as well.
Yes, sir. Welcome, Mr. Ramsburg.
Mayor Lee, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. On behalf of my dedicated five-person staff and the Regional Cable Television Committee, I want to thank you for your continued support of Roanoke Valley Television. Not only do we work hard to ensure public access to live meetings like this one, but our team serves as an extension of your city's public communications efforts. Last year, we produced 154 unique projects for the city and city public schools, representing over 1,200 finished minutes of video, as well as several graphic design and animation projects. On a regional level, in partnership with Roanoke County and the town event and their respective school systems, RV TV provides a valuable community resource for information about civic and educational initiatives. The support of this council is greatly appreciated, and I thank you and would be happy to answer any comments or questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, sir, for all that RV TV does to help us get the word out to our citizens on so many different issues. I just have to say that this is not really a huge amount of money compared to our overall budget, but I think we get our money's worth. Sometimes we're not so sure about some of the dollars that go out there, but this is one where I feel like your staff has been so dedicated and so competent and professional over the years, and I just wanted you to be able to take that back to them and let them know that, I mean, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think all my colleagues will join me in saying, we really appreciate what RV TV does, not for us, but for our community, for the viewers out there who learn so much more about what's going on in the city by watching RV TV.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Oh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question. You know, like the program we did a couple of weeks ago with the superintendent, when we do programs like that, and it may be a question for Mr. Cowell, do we have to pay additional monies for those? Because, you know, I was thinking, no, we don't have to pay anything. If we were to come up with some sort of forum or something that we wanted to do, like on the EAB or another one for the gun violence, there's no additional cost for that?
No, any media content can be requested by an employee of the city for us to do on their behalf, yes.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, and Scott has been, I don't want anybody to take advantage of Scott and his staff. They've been very accommodating with those kinds of requests. So several of those things really have allowed us to reach people we've not been able to reach before and have content we have not been able to.
And that was the reason I asked Mr. Cowell, because that's a part of the complaint with the city is our communications, and I'm just trying to figure out ways that we can utilize it and certainly not take advantage, but, you know, if there's something that we feel that can help us get our message out in particular, I was just wondering, would that cost any additional money? And the answer is no, and that's.
And I've met with the new communications staff members with the city and outlined the request process, and I'm happy to be working with them as we go forward to provide communications tools for city staff and for your initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, members of council? Okay. Madam Clerk, call it over.
Yes, sir. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Ramsburg, for your presence here today, and thank you all. The resolution passes. All right, we have item now seven. Item seven, which is reports of city officers and comments of city manager. In the, well, is that accurate? Yeah? All right. I'm going to call on city manager again to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two briefings. The first is one which we have been bringing to you each month for the last few months and will continue to do so going forward, and that is an update on our gun violence prevention framework. And as the chief comes up, because the chief will be, I think, our first speaker in this briefing, just as a reminder to the council that the framework focuses on three areas. That is prevention, intervention, and justice. And of course, justice includes law enforcement as well as the justice system. The intent of this very brief briefing is so that each of those areas, there's an opportunity to update you on what has occurred, really, in the past month, basically, in each of those. We'll start with Chief Roman, obviously, discussing the justice-law enforcement portion of this. Then we'll transition, as we have in the past, with Angie O'Brien, who will discuss the Star City Safe Initiative. That's the effort inside the organization focused on intervention and prevention. And then, of course, we'll conclude with Councilmember Cobb representing the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, which likewise is focused on intervention and prevention as well. So with that, Chief, it's all right.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Ms. Price. It is so good to see you back. Thank you again for another opportunity to just chat with you a little bit about the gun violence efforts. As I sat and I listened, you know, I certainly can appreciate what one of our public speakers said about our downtown Roanoke. I personally sit on the DRI board in a limited capacity just so we can all sit at the table and make sure that we are addressing problems of the downtown. I can say that downtown is one of our most highly patrolled areas of the city. But again, I certainly understand some of the perceptions that may be out there. But I did want you to know that I do sit on that board with DRI, and we collectively try to ensure that we address all problems that's down there, most of which was mentioned today during the public comment. We endeavor to do things like the most recent, where we embarked on the campaign to not allow anyone to sleep on the sidewalks in our very beautiful downtown. Fortunately, we have not been able or not had the opportunity to charge someone, which is a really good thing, because through education and prevention, we're able to, in part, move that problem, if that's what you want to call it, to a better source and make sure that folks who were sleeping on the street have the appropriate resources that they need. So just as an example, that's some of the things that we try to do with downtown Roanoke to make sure that we are a productive part of the solution and not just reacting in a enforcement capacity. So wanted to let you know that our officers stay very, very busy in our downtown area and in our city. In fact, just over the past weekend, we have answered 645 calls per service. That's just in one weekend. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that our officers are constantly moving about the city and addressing the problems of the city, most of those which are readily and successfully resolved at the time in which we interact. But unfortunately, many times, we don't hear about the 600 positive interactions that occurred over the 645 calls in which our officers were able to successfully and collaboratively resolve some of the issues that they are faced with. With that being said, over the past month, our officers out in the streets have seized 30 firearms, illegally possessed firearms. This would bring us to a grand total over the course of the year of 96 firearms. And I think I'll pause to say that, obviously, you will get a copy of this. I see everyone taking notes, but just to make sure that you'll get a copy of this as well. 96 firearms since January 1, illegally possessed firearms. That work continues. Many of you know that we have a offender-based strategy in which we try to identify those folks who just refuse to be productive members of societies and those other people that we really try to make sure that we are addressing, the ones who are causing harm in our community. I wanted to be known that our officers just don't go out and just actively take over and occupy a neighborhood, but there is a strategic approach to identifying those who continuously create harm in our neighborhoods and in our city. And those are the folks that the traffic stops are getting done on. Those are the folks who these firearms are seized from. A total of 786 warrants were served, and that's just over the past 30 days. 178 of those are felony warrants that have been served, and obviously, the rest are misdemeanor warrants. A host of illegal drugs, from crack cocaine to cocaine to amphetamines to heroin, fentanyl, have been seized. In the way of arrests and prosecutions, I'll just talk about the highly-publicized incident that happened at Lansdowne. We were able to make an arrest in that instance. And as of this morning, the gentleman that we believe is responsible for that is still incarcerated, but our officers just didn't leave it there. There was still probable cause in which we were able to secure a search warrant. And from that search warrant of the arrest of that individual, additional drugs were seized and five firearms illegally possessed were seized from that incident alone. So that's the work that has been done on that case. This month, there has been no significant trials in terms of homicides and things like that. But as I speak to you, there is a grand jury convened that has either heard or is hearing testimony into homicide cases. And dependent upon what that grand jury says, potentially, there will be more than one true bill issued for the arrests of those crimes that I just spoke of. Aside from that, of course, our work continues in the prevention side of things. For the month of April, our reset team deployed four times. Of course, deployments are always in the area of where the gunshot victims are geographically and those who are impacted by the gun violence as well. And then again, we are looking forward, which I'm sure you will hear much more about in the subsequent briefing, but we are looking forward to yet another cohort of mentorship programs to start at the library, Melrose Library, at the end of May. We are always very excited, not only when one of these cohorts graduate and successfully placed in gainful employment, but we're equally excited when these cohorts begin. And again, that will occur at the end of May, and we're anxiously looking forward to that. With that being said, I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, I just have one question. Somebody called me last night and asked if we would consider going back to the traffic stops that we used to have. He said back in the late '80s, they would do these routine stops. People complained because they said we were targeting people, but he said it was very effective. And this is a gentleman that lives in Northwest and is very active in the community. He thought that it worked and just wondered if we even just contemplated considering that again.
Yes, that is definitely a strategy we use. Traffic stops is one of the most fruitful ways to come across people who are engaged in nefarious activity. Again, our goal is to just not go to a neighborhood and stop every car that's moving, but those individuals whom we have identified through intelligence that is included in a nefarious activity, the traffic stop is definitely an option. But we have to balance. We certainly have to balance, you know, the perceptions of our community. You know, most people want us to be there and want us to conduct those traffic stops, but we also have to make sure that we don't give a perception that we are in just one particular neighborhood. We go where the statistics and the crime dictate we should be. And right now, obviously, that is in one portion of our city where there is a high level of crime and the likelihood of violence occurring in that neighborhood. What we like to do is not just respond to the crime, but be in the area to, in part, prevent the crime from happening.
Yeah, I think he was referring to the roadblocks, you know? You would go, and they would be just completely stopped.
Yes.
Everybody had to go through it. Have you, have we done that or considered doing that? Just like complete roadblock, nobody can go through until their license has been checked?
Yes, we, in fact, we just had a roadblock, if we call it checkpoints.
Yeah, that's what they call it, roadblock.
We did that in collaboration with the county.
Okay.
Roanoke County Police Department. Obviously, many know with our staffing numbers, some of the things that we used to do, we're just not able to do without collaborating. So we do try to collaborate, and in that instance, we did recently conduct one night of those, which included two endeavors.
Thank you, and I guess people would like to hear that. I didn't know, you know, that you had done that, so that's good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Price?
Chief Roman, as always, you know, we pray for you and the safety of our forces, so continue to do the good work that you're doing. And I just happen to think that the Vice Mayor mentioned about communication and getting the word out. So would you take this opportunity to give the anonymous tip line that folks can call, are encouraged to call in if they see something and want it reported? But could you just elaborate on that just a little bit more, please?
Yeah, well, we are in for a real treat today because I have the captain of our investigations division here, who would love to give that information.
Great.
Captain Puckett, one of our recently-promoted captains, is the captain of our investigative bureau. He oversees all criminal investigations.
Great.
Good afternoon, and how are you guys doing today?
All right.
As Ms. Price had leaded to, we do have a crime line, and I do not have the number with me, but I will be sure to pass that on to you guys. What that is, is it's a program that we have that entitles or enables the citizens to communicate with us anonymously. When they do, it generates a tracking number, and that email actually gets sent directly to me, my lieutenant, and our sergeants throughout the unit that deal with that particular crime. If it's a crime against persons, our major crime sergeant will do. If it's a crime against property, our property sergeant will give that as well. And we get tips all the time. For instance, we just got a tip recently that resulted as part of our investigation that we had, that the chief spoke of earlier. It gave us some information of who might be involved and assisted it with us. So we encourage the citizens to use that, and it is very helpful. There is also an ability to get rewards for different things, but that's created by a board that oversees that, and it's separate from the police department. Does that help answer your questions to that?
Absolutely. Now, if one of us is going to Google that number.
Yeah, we have it already.
You got it?
Yes. 540-344-8500 is the tip for the crime, yeah.
Say it again.
540-344-8500 is what's on our website.
All right.
And we get tips weekly, if not daily some weeks, and it really is helpful, and we do encourage the citizens to do that.
Well, that's good to hear that it is generating some interest and that it's paying off. Because I think that's the other concern I know I have when you hear the media reporting that, you know, no one's talking, no one came forward. So it's, I think the more we can encourage folks to, if you see something, to say something or even if it's just something minute, to report it. So glad to hear that.
And another thing we do, the chief alluded to traffic stops earlier. One of the things we encourage our officers to do is when they're stopping citizens and it happens not to be a target offender, we're encouraging them to use that opportunity to gather information that they normally wouldn't be able to give to us, whether it be because they're afraid of retaliation or they just don't know the forum. Our officers are out seeking that information from them and asking them, hey, what's going on in the neighborhood? What happened this weekend? Can you tell me about the shooting that happened over here? So we're using those avenues as well, and we appreciate any and all information that we can get from the citizens.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Best Pitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Roman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Roman, for making us more aware today and for all the things that you and your team do to keep us all safe. There was an article in the Roanoke Times this morning about the presentation and discussion that some of us actually attended on Saturday over at the Melrose Branch Library, focusing primarily on concerns about inequitable police enforcement. My sense is that a lot of it goes back to what you just said a few minutes ago about being where the need is the greatest. And in fact, the presenter, Dr. Abdul Raou, who's retired professor from Radford but still involved in research and analysis there, the most surprising thing that she said to me was that the number-one concern of folks in African-American communities is not police brutality or inequality, but, or inequity, but lack of adequate police protection. And I think she was looking at a national survey when she said that. I'm not sure if that would correlate exactly if we did the survey just here in the city of Roanoke, but I'm sure that that is a major concern. So, you know, I think we do have to try to find the right balance, clearly. There were some concerning reports shared, one from one of the men involved who is an ordained minister, as I know you are as well, who said that he'd been stopped multiple times, especially during his early time living in Roanoke. It wasn't a suspected felon or, you know, anybody that, as you described. So, so those things are concerning, but you've shared a lot of numbers with us today. And one of the things that came out in the small group discussion that I was in, because you're well aware of the background of how this Equitable Policing Coalition had come together and they were asking for information about traffic stops and where the stops happen and the race of the people who are stopped and et cetera, et cetera. And I understood there were a couple of comments to the effect that even though it says on there whether there was arrest, a citation, or no action, but yet there's still some stops that don't get recorded at all. But I wondered, and again, this came up not just for me, but the group that I was in, what about recording all the other things that you've just been talking to us about on a monthly basis and putting that as a monthly report on the website? So people can see how many arrests were made, what the arrests were for, you know, just, I think most of that stuff gets entered into by some officer, gets entered into a database pretty quickly, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, I just think that it might be good if the people who are concerned out there could look at those numbers every month and see what is really going on, not just with the traffic stops, but across the board, all the, all the actions that the police are taking, when and where and how this happens. How difficult would that be?
It would be another task for us, which is not a problem. The problem, I won't call it a problem.
The concern?
But oftentimes, when you put information out, and we try to be as transparent as we can with putting information out, oftentimes, people find the information that they want, which confirms what their perspective is. And sometimes, it is a little challenging, it is a little frustrating that all of the information that is out there is not evaluated. In some cases, you're not invited to the table to talk, which in the case of the article in which you spoke about, that was the case. I have spoken with most of the individuals, probably that was there, to include the minister, and I shared that I cannot be held responsible or accountable for what happened eighteen years ago. So with that being said, my door is always open. I think you will find from my leadership and the staff and the team that we have in place that we do more listening than we do talking. And we ensure that when we listen, we listen with the ear to understand and not an ear to respond. And we will continue to do that, at least under my leadership. We'll always do that, we'll continue to do that. But I think that is certainly something that we can endeavor to do, as much information as we can put out there. We love putting the information out because I think it exemplifies and highlights the great equitable work that our officers do on a daily basis. So yes, we will definitely look at a forum in which we can put that information out in a systematic way. Sometimes when we put it on social media, some people say we want it in print. And then when we put it in print and social media, they want it in audio and then a podcast. And so we will do as much as we can. But number one, our goal is to ensure the safety of our citizens, and that takes precedence time-wise with what we do. We have made the number-one priority at the police department to combat and interrupt the cycle of violence that we see in our city, and that's what ninety percent of our time.
Well, you know, we can't be responsible for what happened years ago either, whatever. But I, my sense is, and part of the reason why I asked you about this is because my sense is that things are a lot more equitable out there than a lot of people may assume. And putting those numbers out in front of people might just give them, and, you know, everybody's gonna be selective in the information, you know? As a pastor, you know how people select certain verses out of the Bible and they wanna say this, and somebody else selects a different verse and they wanna say that?
Yes.
Yeah, that happens.
Yes.
But if the facts are the facts, the numbers are the numbers, you know? This is how many arrests we made for these crimes and that sort of thing. You know, that's, that's the way it is.
Agreed.
That's the factor. And I would appreciate if you could check out to that.
Absolutely, and we look forward to that opportunity. We look forward to the conversation, because when some numbers are elevated, generally, there is a causative factor of that.
Right.
Just in the case of where we currently are, where the crime happens to be right now. We have an increased presence there, but some would say that our presence is overpoliced. And so there's always a reasoning for some of the statistics. So I always like to accompany statistics with a commentary, but I have to be invited to the table in order to do that.
And just so the council knows.
Chief Roman's blog.
Some of the information that you're asking about is available through the state. So it was a part of the, part of the Community Police Act, Act that was approved in 2020, all of this, the information about who is pulled over, who ultimately is, what results from those, those incidents of is available on datavirginia.gov. It's the Virginia Open Data Portal, which is available for all jurisdictions so that you can look at not only the city of Roanoke on that information, but also any of the surrounding jurisdictions as well as the state. You can also select who the agency was that was involved in that, and the data, at least as I'm looking at it right now, the data is as current as February of this year. So it's not data that's two years old or what have you, and that data will continue to be updated, so folks can certainly use that as a resource as well. That's, again, that provides some context of what the situation is here relative to the situation across the rest of the state as well.
Well, and perhaps on our website, the police page, we could have a link and just, you know, kind of highlight that for people. Here you can find out what's going on across the state. The last thing I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, is I also happen to serve on the Service Delivery Subcommittee of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, and one of the things that we've been talking about is how do we get information out to people? How do we let people know what services are available? One of the things we have not been able to do in the last couple of years is have the sort of neighborhood walkarounds that we used to have. And I think it's really helpful when our public safety, both law enforcement and Fire EMS, can be sort of in the front of that, because it gets people's attention, and they appreciate the fact that you're coming out into their neighborhood, walking their sidewalks, and just stopping and talking to whoever happens to be there. We're getting into the time of year when it's much more enjoyable, especially for people like me who hate cold weather and love it when I hear it's gonna be eighty degrees. I just think that's fantastic. So I just hope that we can consider reinstituting those kinds of walks through the neighborhood. A number of his own city councils have participated in those in the past. And I'm not just talking, let me be clear, I'm not just talking about the police department and fire department. I think somebody from planning, somebody from social services, you know, somebody from right across the board, somebody from solid waste. They do a fabulous job. Every week, they do a fabulous job. But still, there are some people who might have some concerns or suggestions or whatever you want to say. So I would like to see public safety in the forefront, but I don't want it to be limited. I think it should be much broader in terms of the participation from our city to let people know what's going on.
Absolutely, I certainly appreciate that, and we will certainly endeavor to do that. As you know, here most recently, about two weeks ago, we did take a neighborhood walk with Jordan Bell to have our staff and our new recruits learn about the Gainesboro neighborhood. And so that actually was the beginning of several walks that we will take, and we certainly will take the approach of broadening that to the fashion in which you've described. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Best Pitch, that's a good idea. I know we, as a council, may want to get out and participate in some of those walks. We've done that before.
Right.
So I look forward to that. I'm recognizing you, Vice Mayor.
Just one more follow-up with what Mr. Best Pitch said, chief. I was there and I was in Mr. Best Pitch's work group, and it was unfortunate that you all were not given a seat at the table or whatever happened, that you did not have a seat at the table, because a lot of the information that was being shared was information that came from a national perspective. And these are things that are not happening here. And so when you have a room full of people who are getting one piece of information or one side of information, it's pretty unfortunate, because those folks left with those perceptions. And I was a little bit disappointed, because I know that had you been there or somebody else from, from the police force, we could have dispelled some of those rumors or just gotten rid of some of that information that was inaccurate. So what Mr. Best Pitch is suggesting, I think, is really a good idea somehow to get the real, correct information out there, because they were talking about, you know, you shouldn't be pulled over for a busted taillight and wind up dead. Well, that has not happened here.
Right.
And so those are the sort of things, and when you have a room full of people sitting there absorbing all of this, it's pretty unfortunate, because I don't think that that's reflective of Roanoke. And I think having that information out there, I think, is a good thing. I just wanted to let you know that, that I totally disagree with a lot of things that were being said, but I could not rebut them because I didn't know and I didn't have the accurate information. So I think the next time that should happen, I think, really, I would discourage anybody from putting up a group like that together or a forum like that together without having all parties at the table.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, chief, thank you. Got two, I got two quick things.
Yes, sir.
It won't take you long. One is that we're ready to start up the Lee Youth Outdoor Basketball again. I'm hoping at Eureka, I mean, Eureka Park. So we'd like to sometime, I know staff is short, but we'd like to have some officers out there with us at some time to participate or be involved in it, not, not to come out for protection or anything like that, but to come out and participate and be involved, because that's what it's centered around, is you being involved in a positive experience with our police officers. That's the main thing.
I couldn't agree more, and if it takes me dusting off my Air Jordans and my shorts and come out, I will personally do that.
I heard you, I heard you came out with your Jordan last year. I missed that day, but I heard you were there. I appreciate that. One thing that, that I want to ask you, I get a lot of letters on, I don't know what my colleagues do, but panhandlers, they're at every intersection in the city, and some people are complaining that it, it blies the city. What can we do about it? Is there anything we can do about that? Is it a law? Actually, is it a law against panhandling? It's dangerous, I know that, and they got kids out here now collecting money for youth sports or something, at least that's what they're telling you it's for. And I've participated, but it's just, I'm still a kid, we were on, what was I, on, right by the Civic Center, turning off on Orange Avenue, and these kids were coming, they didn't have so much sidewalk, and they all had buckets. And I think that's dangerous, and as we are with many things, when somebody gets hit when an accident happens, then everybody fills this room up and won't tell us what we should do and need to do. But I'm just, just want to get to a thought on, what do we do with these panhandlers? Is there anything we can do with it?
Yeah, I can certainly defer to our city attorney, you know, in terms of what can be done legally.
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, panhandling is protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution. Now, we have taken some actions that I believe are in compliance with the First Amendment. And that is, several years ago, we had three fatalities from pedestrian accidents. Now, where we have, the courts have been very clear, there's a case out of Inrico County, that from the sidewalk or where pedestrians are allowed to be, that they can solicit from vehicles in the motorway, and that that's protected. However, in talking with our engineering folks and transportation folks, medians are typically traffic engineering facilities not meant for pedestrians. So what we've done is prohibited people from soliciting anything from those medians unless it's part of a crosswalk. If it's part of a pedestrian crosswalk, nothing we can do, that's safe. But some of those other areas and where we often see is on those thin islands of concrete in the middle of four-lane roads where traffic's going back and forth, and a lot of times you'll see young people out there with the buckets, just out there. Or there's one that terrifies me, I run into on a regular basis, a gentleman in a wheelchair, and he hasn't got a quarter of an inch on each side, and I'm so fearful that something's gonna happen and he tipped over in front of a car going forty-five miles an hour, and there's nothing that we're gonna be able to do. But those are out there, and we've put up the signs, and you might have seen them, say, Roanoke cares, work with the police department on that. Say, hey, you know, this, what you're doing, if you're standing here soliciting, is illegal under the city ordinance? However, call this number, we have ways that we can help you. So that we're trying to reach out, and hopefully, that's what we do, is we try to reach out and provide the services necessary to those that need it while protecting the safety of our pedestrians.
Well, they're sure, they are surely out in the median street all the time. I mean, and you can go to any strip and especially the main streets in our community, the bigger ones, Hirsberger, Peters Creek, Valley View Mall, I mean, they're out there constantly. I mean, I believe they change shifts. Because you go out there and you see one person at lunchtime, and you go back at dinnertime, there's another person out there walking up and down with the signs, and I'm seeing more females out there now than I've seen in a long time. And they just, you know, they're opening themselves up for some other things, but anyway, they're out there saying, you got money or the sign. But I'm more worried now about the kids, and because they're trying to collect money for sports, and up at Hirsberger, right up, right across from Home Depot and Old Spots up there, and you only got so much median strip. So if they do, some of the bad habits I have, like if my cellphone goes off, I pick it up and look at it, and all of a sudden, you know, somebody gets hit. I mean, those things happen, we don't like, boy, it shouldn't be, but it's just so dangerous, and I'm concerned about, just concerned about that, and their safety. And that's, that's the thing that gets me. I hate seeing anybody's child get hit out there. And as with other things, we need to tell parents, but that doesn't do any good. I think the coaches or whatever have them out there soliciting fun. So I just wanted to bring that up and just let you know, I'm really concerned about it, and we're back into this season, the weather's getting warm, and they're out there now, and I'm just so afraid that they'll get hurt. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Just wanted to piggyback on what the mayor is saying with regards to the homeless or the panhandlers. I understand what the city attorney is saying with regards to being at the crosswalk. My concern is where the mayor is at, what if they're walking up and down that median strip? Is that against the law? Is that where the line is blurred with the law?
No, that's where we have an ordinance that prohibits it.
Right, but if they don't pay attention to the ordinance, and if a patrol car's coming by, can they speak to them, not arrest them, or cite them, but warn them that they are? Because it is a safety issue.
Yes.
I just don't want, I think, Ms., the Vice Mayor mentioned the lady who got injured at Hirsberger.
I don't know if she died, did she die?
And Rutgers, up at Rutgers, up at the Rutgers, because she was moving, and so that's what, I just don't want someone to die before we are ready to react to it.
I absolutely agree, and, you know, our officers, we are in the mode of education to try to educate. and move people along instead of using the enforcement that's available to us as a first resource. And so there's two pieces to that. There's after the charge is made, you know, prosecution. Because the prosecution, if we're charging over and over and again, but the case is dismissed in court or the person doesn't show up and it's just a fine, there's no punitive influencing factors to make the person abide by that. And then the other piece is, you know, I'll say, Mr. Cobb was, had an opportunity to ride with the police department not too long ago. And oftentimes, in the case of the basketball players or sports folks who are in the median soliciting drugs, soliciting funds for, let me make sure I say that correctly, soliciting funds for the particular team that they play for. You know, our officers often hear, certainly you have something better to do than to bother this young African-American team that's simply trying to solicit funds to buy. And I think Mr. Cobb probably saw in part the lashing that our officers receive when they go into an enforcement mode. This particular incident happened downtown. So, our officers, you know, sometimes stuck in between, what do we do? What's the balance between enforcement and then the prosecution? And then coming across as though we are limiting a young disadvantaged basketball team for soliciting funds simply for a jersey. They do get out, educate, talk to, and in most cases, the folks in the median move on. But oftentimes, it's only to find another intersection, so.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to very quickly point out that this is a problem in many areas of our city, not just in one side of the city or one area. I just happen to live right up the hill from the intersection of Franklin Road and Brandon Avenue to the right and McClanahan Street to the left, as you come right under the train trussel there. And the median at the end of McClanahan
Yes.
and the median at the end of Brandon, both sides of Franklin Road, have a sign that says exactly what you were talking about, call 211. This is, you know, I forget exactly how to word it, but you know what I'm saying? You're prohibited from standing on this median. And almost every day, there are people standing right in front of those signs, directly right in front of those signs, putting their hands out to the cars that come by and trying to collect money. And I agree with you. Enforcement, when you get to that level, enforcement is very, very difficult. But yeah, sometimes I go out, I come back and the guy that was standing on Brandon has moved over to McClanahan and the guy that was at McClanahan moved over to Brandon. So, you know, I guess people see a different face, they might pretend to get another dollar. I don't know. But it is, it is a serious concern in terms of public safety. Because, you know, we certainly don't want to see any of these people get injured or certainly killed. But at the same time, if a driver suddenly swerves to avoid something like that happening, then there's somebody else that's, you know, their vehicle gets into a collision that didn't need to happen. So, it's a concern on a lot of levels. But as you say, it's a, you know, I think most of those people are going to come right back then, back to the same spot the next day, no matter what you do.
I'll just close by saying, we will certainly engage our Commonwealth attorney again to ensure that he will prosecute these cases in his court.
Chief, have you seen a lot of injuries, like the one that happened on Hirschberger? I mean, I freaked out, I thought the woman was dead. I called the mayor, I was trying to call Bob, I didn't know what was happening. But did she fall or did she miss a step or something? Because all I saw was flowers going up in the air.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't know if she had a misstep or she inadequately assessed an approaching or the distance of an approaching vehicle. Really don't know that.
Do we see a lot of injuries like that, though, from being in the median?
I'm not going to say we see a lot, but I would say that one is one too many. And, you know, unfortunately, especially the injuries that that young lady received, certainly we don't even want to see one incident like that, so. Well, thank you so much for your time.
And Mayor, in the interest of kind of getting us back on schedule and also re-centering on gun violence, which is what this briefing is about, we've asked Angie to defer till next month, so we'll just go straight to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission update as well.
That's fine.
Thank you, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Bob and Mr. Mayor. I'll just give a quick update, a couple of highlights. The Gun Violence Prevention Commission has completed our review of the mini-grants and the Violence Interruption Grant applications. And the recipients will be notified later this afternoon and a press release will go out. So, that process is nearing completion. Then the Angie and Laura Carini, who work with the ARPA Funding, will work with the organizations to complete the MOUs and get the grants out into the community. Just as a reminder to the public, we had 37 applications with requests for over $1 million and we're only able to award $500,000. So, you can see what some of our challenge was. We have confirmed a partnership of marketing agencies that are going to be working with us to develop a comprehensive marketing and public awareness campaign for gun violence reduction. We're going to have an initial conversation meeting with them on May 12th. And from there, we'll be engaging all of our community partners, youth service providers, citizens in the community to be a part of that process. The Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team has been very busy at work. I had the honor of doing three presentations with Chris and Antonio at Northside Middle School. One of the three different classes were reading a book about gun violence and some of the results that that can lead to. And so we were able to talk about the programs that we're doing actively with youth in the community. And it was very well received. Three programs that are underway through the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team. One is the Community Healing Circles. The first one was held at Eureka Park Rec Center in April, April 14th. Those will be monthly. And from here on out, will be at the Melrose Library. The Moms Uplifting Moms Program, which is in collaboration with the Deltas, started at Forest Park Academy and that is a monthly meeting. And then Antonio just launched on Saturday, the first pilot program of Hood Healer Rites of Passage. It's a seven-week intensive program designed to address the cultural, historical, social, and holistic wellness needs of middle and high school African-American and multicultural students of the Roanoke Valley. And they just had their first event, which was very successful. So, these are seven weeks. Hood stands for Health, Ownership, Optimism, and Discipline. And so there will be a number of cohorts that will be developed out of this. Our next meeting is May the 10th. We haven't set a location yet, but our last meeting was at the Melrose Library and we're going to move to different locations throughout the city so that we can engage with people in different parts of the city at all of our meetings going forward. So, I think that's all I have for right now.
Let me say something to Councilman Cobb, and I thank him for the work that he puts in on this. You know, we just had a shooting over the weekend and I think he was 22-year-old. I may not have my facts accurate, but I spoke with Superintendent. It wasn't a high school student, it was after a high school event. As a matter of fact, the people that were in the shooting didn't go to the prom. But it was a shooting in a car with people, teenagers. You know, I'm saying, and I don't know, and I may need to articulate this in some kind of way. But we got to get to these Hood guys out here or something. I mean, it seems like we're doing what we can do, but it's like it's not penetrating. And I think two or three people got shot, well, one got hit. I don't know, I don't know what the status of those shootings were. They're shooting the car. I mean, this is, you know, I'm going to shoot somebody, bam, 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 with the gun. And I'm saying that because I've been in contact with my colleagues in other urban cities in Norfolk, Richmond, my back, LaVastona, the mayor was out, he and I were here last, I think it was Tuesday night, we spent some time together talking about issues in Richmond. And we were comparing the two. And I got something from a mayor, not the mayor, well, a citizen down in Portsmouth that had this group that was going out and it was a group of ex-offenders. I got the paper, I showed it to you, he shared with me the paper, that these guys were out there making an impact. I think we're doing some good things, but I'm wondering if we're putting the right base on it or sending the right people, and I know we are probably are, but picking the right people. You all are frustrated, just like I'm frustrated, you know, with, you know, stuff that's happened at prom night and all these schools I think have after-prom, socials or events. But something is not penetrating the minds of these young people out here. They're shooting at each other, they're trying to kill each other with guns. Think about that. Just think about that. They're trying to kill each other for situations that relate to going with my boyfriend or going with my girlfriend. But, and to me, there is no fear of consequences. I wanted to say that while the chief is here. They don't fear what may happen. They don't fear what may come in court. They don't fear, first of all, because it takes so long. It takes almost a year for something to come to court. And I don't know, but it's just a concern I have that we can have a summit and have meetings and you got a shooting. You got a shooting. And, you know, I get calls and things on that, some of y'all may not get them, but I get it as a mayor. And I'm just voicing my concern about what can we do? And I was just asked that by a reporter early on. What are we doing? And I shared with some of the things that we got going now. But when you sit back at the end of the day, you look and evaluate what you have. And something is not connecting. I don't know what it is, but something is not connecting. And some of these kids don't have a prior record of violence like that. They just get the gun and I guess they're persuaded to go shooting. But I'm just afraid that kids are going to be dying. And as the summer gets here, it gets hotter, days, and the longer, I'm really concerned. So, the good work that's being done here, we've got to push it. And I'm hoping Antonio and Chris can continue to work. But I'm just saying, as a council on this, we got to, we've got to do something. People, these kids are going crazy. And I think, and I'll say this, and it may not, you know, it may not resonate with some people, it probably will. But if we don't hold this up, this is not going, this stuff is not going to stop in Northwest. Right now, it's pretty much in Northwest, pretty much in Northwest. And that's where we're headed, that's where the money is going. And that's what we're trying to do. And I say the money, the grants, we're focused in Northwest, we're at Melrose. You know, and so I just want to share that with you all. I'm alarmed and I don't know what we're doing. I'm not saying, we're doing all we can do, we're doing a good job, these are good reports. But it just seems like it's not connecting. And I don't want to go to any more funerals, man, I just don't want to do it. But it looks like that's what's happening out here. So, we got a problem with this. We have a serious problem. And I like to put the good face on it, I like to spin it. But as mayor and people coming into Roanoke and all of a sudden, these things are happening and it's happening all the way down the East Coast. Jackson, Mississippi, I think it was, or Jackson, Florida. Drive by and four kids, three kids got killed and one person was wounded. Teenagers. It's frightening.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and you are exactly right. We're all frustrated and I wish that we could change people's behaviors and the way they resolve conflicts. I would love that more than anything. I did want to say that we are making a difference. It's not happening as fast as we'd like for it to. But when we have kids that start being connected with, going through programs and they say, you know, six months ago, I wanted to shoot somebody, now I don't want to be near a gun. I mean, we're hearing kids say this, they're changing their behaviors. We have people who've been previously incarcerated who are active mentors in the Melrose Library Program. These cohorts that Chief Roman was talking about that are tied with the apprenticeship program. They are making a positive contribution and in many cases, I would argue, are de-escalating and resolving some of these conflicts. We could use a lot more of them. Because part of the challenge that we face is, if you want to prevent a conflict from happening, you have to know it's going to happen. And it's nearly impossible. To prevent a conflict from happening, you have to know it's going to happen. You see what I mean? If somebody knows they're going to, part of this is the individual. If they're making a choice to pick up a weapon to resolve a conflict, then that's their choice. And whoever is going to be the recipient of that may or may not know that that's coming. But there are other situations where we may know that's happening. And that's where groups like the Peacemakers, going out and anticipating this, can be helpful in that. We've just got to expand that reach of programs in the community. Changes are happening. They're not happening as fast as we'd like for them to, but they are happening. And I share everybody's frustration. I wish we could make a quicker impact. But the reality is, and I will tell you this from the state perspective, that the people who are working on this throughout the state have said, again, on a recent call, a lot of the stuff that we're doing now are investments where we're going to see significant changes over eight to 10 years. We are not going to see them immediately. So, we have to find a way to have an immediate impact to reduce and stop the violence. And we are, I personally and the commission are wide open to ideas and ways that we can help fund them. And if we've got people in the community who have answers to that, let us know. We'll work to find a way to fund it. Seriously, because we're trying everything we know to do. We're trying to get more people who are ex-offenders to sign up and participate. And for various reasons, they feel reluctant to do it. And I, but there are opportunities and they're paid opportunities. I mean, the mentors that we have are paid positions. So, you know, for a lot of folks who are previously incarcerated that struggle to find employment, here's an opportunity to be employed as a mentor. They can contact me or they can contact Lloyd at Reset Team or they can contact Chris. I mean, we just, as the mayor said, we got to connect people who know they can make a difference with how they can make a difference. The guy that called you last night.
He's got a lot of ideas and I'm going to direct him to Chris or to.
Let me ask you this question, how do you measure, how do we measure success?
Well, we measure success by reducing gun violence.
But we're not doing that.
Well, we aren't. You can measure it by numbers. And you can measure it by reduction in those numbers. But you can also measure it in how, in people's attitudes toward how they resolve conflict, toward the things that lead to violence. And those are harder to measure. We can set a goal today to reduce gun violence by 50% next year. But we have to make sure that we have everything in place to be able to do that. Because we don't want to set a goal that we can't reach or that's immeasurable. And so that's part of our challenge, is how do we, so if we want to reduce homicides, for example, we had 16, if we want to reduce that in half, how are we going to do that? Well, we can argue, we can do these preventative measures, these intervention methods, these response strategies, and we have a lot of those in place. And we can connect the dots on how we believe that will do that. That's going to reach a certain number of people, but it may not reach all of the people that may or may not commit those crimes. may or may not commit those crimes. So, that's where the collaboration with the police department comes in on this offender-based strategy, is how do we, and, and we can't fully arrest our way out of this, but, um, we can collaborate with them to address that. And, and the other thing I'll add to this, which is a piece we don't talk about very much, last year, we had 16 homicides related, related to gun violence, we had quadruple that number overdoses. Opiate overdose, overdoses in the community. The press never covers that. They always cover gun violence, but they don't cover the opioid-related overdoses, and the connection between drug use and drug deals and gun violence. And there's a direct, there is a direct correlation. So, we have to, we have to address the drug side of it, as well as the gun violence side of it, to get to the heart of it.
Well, I'll tell you why people don't, the media doesn't cover that many times, the opioid overdoses, that's a choice people make.
Picking up a gun's a choice.
Well, now, getting shot's not a choice.
Well, not getting shot.
If somebody pulls up with your gun-
And people will argue they're trying to protect themselves too, which is another part of the conundrum for this.
Fooling around with a lot of what they're fooling around is a choice. They may not choose to get shot, but they know they're putting them in a situation where somebody that's on the other side doesn't like them, could feel like they got swindled, whatever, is likely to shoot them. So, you know, there, there's got to be some responsibility. Mayor, you've said that many times.
I agree, I agree with it, I know there's responsibility, but what I'm seeing is, it's moving, it's moving to a trend where you can be in a situation, you happen to be in a, well, I can't say a wrong place, you at a, at a restaurant, and all of a sudden, a fight breaks out, and there's some people there with guns, and people randomly shooting in a building with guns. Uh, Black, Blacksburg-
That's really rare, that's really rare.
Wait a minute, yeah, it does, but it's rare, but any loss of life is, 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 is bad, and it's rare, just like we had the shooting up in Blacksburg a few weeks ago. Uh, that young man wasn't involved in that, he was outside to, to the building, and it just so happens, he's in the wrong place at the wrong time, and the people he was with were, I think, I understand it was relatives. So, I'm just saying, that's what concerns me, Bill, is that the, is sometimes the people hanging with the wrong crowd, doing the wrong thing, but I can see it moving over now, it's moving over. I'm gonna shoot Bob Smith, regardless of who's around him, o- over at the Shell Station, they shooting at police officers, they shooting at police officers. And I'm saying, what the world, what is this coming to, where they, is there no fear? So, I'm just saying, as we go along, we have a challenge, and, you know, I, I understand with these senior citizens out there, and, you know, it's, it's something that is difficult to say, that will be, it's gonna take, and I understand where Joe is coming from, and I, I know that, that's what the, the math tells us, before what we're doing will take place, it could be eight to 10 years. And, uh, that's several, and that's the question that every criminal justice system is asking this country, what's success? Because it's an upward, that's the one thing that's gripping this country right now, is gun violence, gun violence. Every mayor in this, mayor of urban, this urban city in this state is gripped with gun violence. We're headed the game, we're doing a lot of things that other communities aren't doing, and they're picking back on, they're, they're following us and piggybacking on certain things, but I'm just afraid that it seemed like to me, instead of a sign of getting better, it's getting worse. The drive-by shooting, we didn't used to have that, we'd have a shooting, shooting every now and then, but it's just tough, and that's all I'm asking. Uh, I, I'm supportive, pushing, and hope we can do something, but, you know, you get these questions, and you ask them, and you're asking people and families to get involved, that's all. And I'm saying, at some point down the line, they're gonna say, please measure success to me, and, and they got some numbers on the other side. So, we'll tell them what we're trying to do, and hopefully, what happened down the line, but it's, uh, it's, it is, it's dim out here. I'm glad to see what we're doing, and hopefully, that'll shine some light on it, but a lot of these older citizens, they can't sit on the porch at night, uh, they can't sit out when it gets dark, because bullets are going up, and there are people driving by, and there's, you know, and bullets don't have a name on them, they don't have a name on them. And so, that's something that we've got to deal with. I'm glad we're bringing the ex-offenders in. I think that's being recognized across the country, is what's the face you're putting on there to reach these, uh, in many cases thugs? Is, who, who's the face that's gonna do this? Who, who you're talking to? Uh, and, and that's what things will always just, that's what people look at, and, I mean, and, and these guys are hardline guys, you know, and so, we've got to put, I think, in my opinion, hardline, or people who can relate to crime, people who've been in prison, people who lived a hard life, that's what they're listening to. They're not listening to Sherman Lee, comes there with a bachelor's degree from Virginia Union, and another from Old Dominion, that's, that's, I think, and I'm just saying that as a way we get around, and we're doing a good job of putting the people out there that have that, but I think we gotta, we've got to, to focus to that, because again, I, you know, every, every weekend, or every other weekend, I'm asked questions about, how do you explain, and what are you gonna do about the shooting this weekend? None of us like it, I don't like it, a, a, as mayor, but gosh, man, after a while, you can't explain it. That's all I have.
I just have one thing, and, uh, and I just wanted to ask Joe, what do you have in place to measure the funding, that you, the 75,000 that you had last year, that you used, uh, for some programs throughout, that you, you had, I guess, organizations apply for, and this year, with the money that you have for the, uh, from the commission for, uh, programs? How do you measure that, uh, for, I guess, for success, to make sure that the money was used, uh, and that you had an outcome from that?
Well, we have, we have very clear metrics that we use for anyone that we give grants to-
Okay.
-to respond to the number of people they've reached, the specific outcomes that were reached through their program, so each program is unique, and we have reports for each of those.
Okay, will you be reporting, sharing that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's something we can measure.
Yes, I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're gonna be sharing that with everybody?
Yeah, we'll share that with everybody.
We appreciate that, thank you.
All right, anybody, anything else on the briefings, do we have?
Yeah, we have a second briefing, but I'll ask you all, in light of the time that that briefing took, do you want to move into your items for action, and then we can come back? Sorry, Katie, who's been sitting there, or do you want to, um, do you want to proceed to the second briefing? I'll, I'll leave it up to you all, given that you've been here since nine this morning, so.
I guess that, we'll stop asking questions, and-
Yeah, I would say let her come, I, I reviewed it, and, uh, yeah.
A matter of fact, it's been a long day, but we had issues.
Yeah.
The issues, the questions this morning took longer, we nearly took three hours, uh, this morning, and then we had to decide on school board candidates, so those are like quick issues.
Yeah.
Uh, so-
Well, I'll have, I'll have Katie come up here then, and we'll do the, we'll do the second briefing, so, um, you all-
She's been sitting there.
Well, Katie's coming up here and getting, getting this set up, this is kind of a, a return, um, you'll remember, gosh, it's probably been almost a year ago, I think, that we first came before, that Katie first came before you all, to talk about, um, some of the services that we were beginning to put in place, um, to enable folks to access the information that we have available in the city, regardless of what language, um, they most, were, were most comfortable in. And that includes sign language and, and others, um, in addition to foreign languages also, and that was just kind of the introduction. So, since that time, Katie has been able to progress this program beyond that introduction, um, and this is itself still a pathway to still yet other actions that will, um, follow on this as well. So, because of that progress that Katie's made, I've asked her to come and, um, just kind of update you on those items, and give you, um, some additional insight of what's going on with language access, and also some ways in which you can help promote awareness of that. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Katie, so she can walk you through it.
Sure, I will try to keep it brief, I know y'all have had a very long day. Um, so, like Bob said, um, I think last time I presented, most of the information I had was just on our actual translation and interpretation services. We've now kind of gone foundationally behind that, into kind of a full-scale policy behind services that are offered, when they're offered, what languages they're offered, and all of those kinds of things. Um, so, just a little bit of background, within the city of Roanoke, about 1 in 10 of our residents speak languages other than English at home, and according to Census data, about 50% of those people report that they speak English less than very well. So, that puts them into the limited English proficient classification, according to Census data, um, which is kind of what, that's the population that we've really targeted with, um, this language access plan. Um, so, we have about an average of 400 requests across all city departments a month for language assistance services, um, and as we've launched this, we've definitely seen that increase. I just pulled data from the month of April, I forgot what month we're in now. I pulled data from the month of April, and we had about 360 requests, um, from last month alone. Um, within Roanoke City Public Schools, we have 56 non-English languages spoken, and we have about 67 countries of origin within the city of Roanoke. So, again, a lot of diversity, um, and just because people don't speak English at home, also doesn't mean that they've been born overseas. We have a fair number of students in the schools, or even adults that were born in the US, but because of the languages that their parents spoke, or grandparents, or whoever raised them, they may have been born in the US, but still don't consider English their primary language. Um, I will not read this, because you guys wrote it, so you know very well what it says, um, but we do know that our language access plan meets the vision statement that council has established, as well as components of the city Plan 2040 that talk about interwoven equity. So, a big reason that we're doing this is just to ensure that no matter what language you speak, what country you're coming from, any of that, you have meaningful access to any of the services and programming and all of that, that the city offers. Um, it's also illegal compliance, which is less exciting to me. I like that we're doing it because we want to make sure people have access, but we do also have a legal requirement, um, through Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, and there was also an executive order that states that any governments, um, receiving federal funding are required to offer language access, um, to all people, so, we'll just skip that, because that's less exciting for me. Um, so, this is a, just a brief implementation timeline of what we've done thus far. Um, so, August of last year, we first installed what we're calling our LEP call-in lines, so basically, any city number that you call, you'll get a recording that says, press one for English, or two for other languages, and that will immediately route the caller to an interpreter, so they can request a new trash can, they can ask to apply for a border commission, anything that the city does, they can access an interpreter through those call-in lines. Um, and then, just in March, we published our language access plan. Um, as you can see, it was a very long process, but we finally made it happen. Um, so, starting in April, we're implementing the plan on a tiered schedule, I guess, um, basically, depending on the departments that are the most public-facing, and interact the most often with limited English proficient individuals, we've kind of established those tiers. Um, we're also considering our continuing outreach to the public, as well as outreach within the departments, um, and training throughout all departments on how to utilize the services, how to recognize needs, all of that kind of stuff. And then, in December of this year, we're hoping to launch our community advisory panel, that'll be made up of people from within the community that speak non-English languages, service providers, nonprofits that are interacting a lot with this population, um, as well as city employees that are utilizing the services, just to give us feedback and insight, make sure that what we're doing is actually working and meeting their needs. And then, January of next year, we're gonna start on kind of the second phase, like Bob referenced, this is just the start of our plan, um, and I have another slide that'll get a little bit more into what that Phase Two is. Um, so, there's really two components of this. The Language Access Coordinator, which is quite frankly, a made-up title that I've given myself, um, because I've just taken on a lot of this, so just coordinating, giving trainings, technical pieces of it, all of that kind of stuff, I've just kind of been the, the figurehead of the plan, and what we're implementing through that. And then, we also have liaisons from each department that will help communicate to their respective departments, what are the pieces of this plan, is it working, what is our data looking like, all of those pieces. So, just making sure it's a very comprehensive approach, and it's not just coming down from one office or one department, but we're making sure everybody has the information. Um, so, we've partnered with Valasha, this contract started, I believe, in January of 2020. Um, so, Valasha offers on-demand interpreters and translation services in over 280 languages, so we have yet to encounter a language in the city that they're not able to help us with, which has been huge. Um, they have remote interpretations, you can do it over the phone, you can do a video remote, which is kind of like a Zoom sort of platform, um, they also have in-person, they have document translation, all of that. Um, and it also includes, uh, American Sign Language, which right now is about as far as our plan goes, in terms of people with visual or hearing disabilities, um, but we do know that because Valasha offers that, that's a really easy first step for us to take in that direction. Um, so, as I very briefly mentioned, um, Valasha is basically threefold in terms of the verbal interpretation piece of it. So, they have over-the-phone, which is what we're utilizing for our call-in lines, as well as any office that receives a call, they can dial a number and have an interpreter added in a conference call feature. They have onsite, which we've utilized in one-on-one meetings, in press conferences, anything like that. And then, the video remote has been really good as well, we have the iPad kiosks in the municipal lobby, the police department, emergency management, there may be one or two, I'm forgetting, but that's been really good, especially if you have a document that you need to hold up to the camera and have it translated for you, those kinds of things. Um, we've been utilizing all three of those. Um, document translation is a very big process, um, because it's mostly charged by the word, we're trying to be really conscious of how we're using the funding, we want to make sure that people have the documents that we need, but we also want to make sure that we have some policy in place, so that it's not overused, or taken advantage of, or anything like that. Um, so, vital documents will always be translated, and vital documents basically include, um, anything that requires a signature, anything that is time-sensitive, or has notification of benefits, um, there's a very specific list of what's included in that vital document category. Um, and so, we've established, I have another slide for this as well, but we've tiered our languages, based on which ones have the most speakers within the city of Roanoke. So, our vital documents, emergency communications, those kinds of things will be translated into our top three languages, and then underneath that, you'll see taglines. So, we've translated something that essentially says, this is an important document, if you don't understand it, please call this number, and we'll have it translated for you. Um, so, we'll put that on notices of city council, or boards and commission agendas, um, any other papers that go out, that don't necessarily need to be translated, but we want to make sure people know that it can be translated, we'll put those taglines in our top six languages. And then, obviously, by request, um, at any point, a department can request interpretation or translation, residents can call in and request that, so it's always available by request, whenever it's needed, even if it's not something that we immediately translate the first time out. Um, so, these are our top-tier languages. We pulled data from, uh, Census, American Community Survey, Roanoke City Schools, um, we did an employee survey to see where languages were being utilized within the organization. So, our top three languages right now are Spanish, Swahili, and Dari, and then behind those are Haitian, Creole, Nepali, and Arabic, and then Farsi, French, and Vietnamese are the third tier. So, that just kind of shows you the proportion of speakers of each of those languages within the city. And we actually elevated Dari just a little bit, because most of our Afghan families speak Dari. So, coming in as refugees, or as humanitarian parolees, they have a lot higher needs, and they're gonna be interacting a lot more with a lot of our service providers, so we put that in our top tier, just to make sure that those specific families are also receiving communications quickly, and in a way that's accessible. Um, so, these are kind of the steps that we're taking to create awareness within the organization. Um, we have posters, we have signs, we're putting all of those up in lobbies, offices, entrances to the buildings, that let people know that language services are available, um, and we're not just doing those in English, because that kind of defeats the purpose. If you don't speak English, it's not gonna help you to have a sign in English saying you can have an interpreter. Um, so, we've translated those into 20 languages. Um, and then also, again, using those taglines and announcements on mailings that go out from the city to let people know. Um, and then, uh, those public notices, again, on agendas, on announcements of meetings, hearings, all of that, letting people know that if they need an interpreter, one will be provided at no cost, and we've put it as well on the application to speak before city council, so that if people want to come and speak, their language isn't gonna be a hindrance to that. Um, so, this is a little bit of that Phase Two that I was talking about. Um, coming up in the next year or so, we're gonna do some more extensive trainings, not just on the language access plan, or how to utilize the Valasha services, or anything like that, but to go a little bit more in-depth as well, into some cultural competency training, um, what are the biggest differences between this culture and this culture, how do you interact with an interpreter, if that's not something you've ever done before, how do you identify what are the needs within those your department serves, those kinds of things. And we've also submitted, um, a bilingual compensation plan to human resources, so that those employees that already speak multiple languages, and are utilizing their language in their job, can be compensated fairly for that. Um, and then, a little bit down the line as well, we're looking at some kind of strategic recruitment efforts, because Roanoke is incredibly diverse, ethnically, linguistically, culturally, all of that, so helping departments understand what that looks like, and how do we recruit so that our city workforce is representative of our community. Um, we know that that's a really important piece, so we're moving in that direction as well. And then, expanding the language access policy to include a little bit more, um, those that have speech or hearing, or other communication disabilities, what will- have speech or hearing or other communication disabilities, what will that look like to be able to provide access to Braille interpretation or a little bit more in the American Sign Language piece of it and all of that. So, those are all things that will be coming down in the next year or so. Also, continuing to monitor, is it the, are the services being utilized? Are they working? Are people aware that they're there? Are there populations that have changed and we need to update some of our policy? All of that will be done on an annual basis as well. I feel like I may have already covered this, but it's a slide, so we'll go over it again anyways. So, our internal outreach, again, is through those departmental liaisons that I mentioned, as well as trainings that will be required for new employees, and also an annual training that will be required for all employees, and then distributing materials. We've created I Speak cards in 20 languages, so someone could hand a card to a city employee that says, for example, "I speak Dari, please call an interpreter so we can communicate." So, making sure those are up in libraries and at DSS and different places like that. We've also shared those cards and other resources with a lot of our community partners, with Commonwealth Catholic Charities and Blue Ridge Literacy and some of those nonprofits that serve this community a lot more. And then, social media, we're working on some videos and posts in multiple languages to let different populations know about the services that we offer and how they can utilize them to reach different city departments. And that's it. I kept it very short. If you guys have questions, please ask them. I know this is a lot of information, and I'm very deep in it, so I sometimes forget that this could be new information for some people.
I will say that you should, if you haven't already. You'll start seeing things that are produced by the city, therefore, presented in these, at least those top three languages, so you should have already started. And again, we'll see more of that. That includes when you go to our website, it'll have information on there that if you need information. And as far as I know, at this moment in time, we're the only community in Virginia that's actually approaching language access in this fashion, again, and speaks directly to, I agree with Katie, not just to the law, but speaks directly to the objectives we have in the community of being a welcoming community and ensuring that language is not a barrier in benefiting from the services that are here, as well as engaging in their local government.
Bob, I think this is very, very good, a very extensive service. I just have one quick question. Do we get any federal funding or grant funding, or do we have to?
We had some funding at the very, very beginning of this, which was actually tied to the CARES Act and actually the communications predominantly in Spanish as we were going through the response to COVID. That was actually how we, that's actually how we secured Katie, was through that first initial. Everything after that is actually things that we're funding locally with, I think we might have had one other language. Do we have a Language Access Grant briefly as well?
We had a grant through the Department of Emergency Management that I think covered it for about six months.
So, that's not ongoing? That's something you have to, one time, or you have to continue to apply for it or something? It just seems like it's pretty expensive, especially when you're doing it in-person, which is all good stuff. But I know that it has to be.
It's actually, yeah, it's actually been, I mean, again, the cost will go up as more and more folks use it, but it's been a little more cost-effective, frankly, than we would have anticipated to be able to deliver. But if we do this well, those costs will go up because, obviously, more and more folks will actually take advantage of the service as we go forward, and we'll have to continue to watch that.
Does anyone have any questions?
If I could just speak really quickly to that as well, that's another reason we're working on this bilingual employee incentive. They won't necessarily be interpreters because that's a bit of a different skill level, but it will enable us to utilize employees we already have to offer some of those services instead of continuously paying to an outside contractor for those kinds of things. So, that's another option.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Makes perfect sense. Mr. Bestpage.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Katie, I just wanted to especially thank you for the participation in one of our subcommittee meetings for service delivery of the Equity and Advisory Empowerment Board. I thought you did a great job, and I was especially pleased that you didn't just say, "Oh, yes, we have a program where it's, you know, we're getting it up the line and so forth." What you said was, "We've made some progress and we still have a lot of work to do."
Yes.
And I think that was really a good way to approach it, and you certainly outlined for us here this afternoon what else needs to be done. But, you know, we can't just rest on our laws and say, "Oh, we're the first in Virginia, you know, we're putting our own money behind it and all that kind of stuff." This is going to be an ongoing process just to get to the level that we really want to be, and I appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Sure, thank you.
And this is a, this is a permanent presence in our local government. This is not a program or an initiative. We're just getting started, and it will become no different than when, you know, we started putting things on the website. That became a permanent part of what we do. This will be that as well.
So, we need to have Katie do a workshop at BML so the rest of Virginia can find out how important this is.
Once they find out how well it's working. Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick, for all the work you have done with the Language Access. My question is, if someone wants to come before city council in one of the languages that are in our community that would like to address city council, is there a way for them to sign on to be able to get an interpreter for that council meeting?
There is. So, there is the form that you fill out on the website to speak before city council, and we've added a field to that that allows them to select an interpreter. But I also am happy if people call my office or call any office. Sometimes, the website can be a little bit tricky to navigate in that way, so to just let us know, "Hey, I speak Spanish, I speak whatever language, I would like an interpreter to be there," and we'll arrange that. We're asking about 48 hours' notice just because we have to make sure we can make those arrangements. But absolutely, yes, they can have an interpreter. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. I think that's it.
Sure. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
We're moving on to items recommended for action. Item number one, acceptance of the FY 2022-4-for-life grant for training, supplies, or other appropriate items used for emergency medical services. There are two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution. Second.
Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Health 4-for-life grant for emergency medical services made to the city of Roanoke and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, I'll ask that you call the roll. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee's absent. And the resolution passes. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance appropriating funding from the Virginia Department of Health for the purpose of purchasing emergency medical services, training, equipment, and supplies, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion by my colleagues? Hearing none, I will ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And the budget ordinance passes. Item number two, acceptance of the Virginia EMS Scholarship Program funds from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services to support the certification of FIRE EMS students. There are two measures.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services Scholarship Program grant funding to the city and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
Are there, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, hearing none, would you please call the roll? Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. We now have.
The budget ordinance. Did I vote on that?
Did you call, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, I did.
Did I?
Oh, you know what? I did not call Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb.
Senior move.
I said, "I'm moving this thing pretty quick."
Mayor Lee.
Senior, no, for senior.
Yes, okay, okay.
Move the budget ordinance.
Do we get a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Yes.
I'll let you get caught up.
I'm trying to catch up with you all.
Yeah, I'll let you get caught up. And Mr. Bestpage actually called, moved the ordinance before I could even get it out of my mouth, but we're going to move this thing on along. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services and the Virginia EMS Scholarship Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask that you call the roll. All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number three.
Appropriation of funds to implement and maintain an electronic summons system for the Roanoke Police Department. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the electronic summons assessment collected by the clerk of court for the implementation and maintenance of the electronic summons system, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion among members of council? Hearing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number four is deappropriation of funds from the Virginia Utility Protection Services Incorporated in connection with the Blue Heels E911 BA811 Communications Center. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Clerk, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to unappropriate funding from the Virginia Utility Protection Service for the construction of the Blue Heels Communications Center, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 capital fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Are there any discussion, Madam Clerk? All right. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item number five is the acquisition of real property rights for the Patterson Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project. There is a ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
It's a resolution. I'm sorry.
No.
No, it's.
No resolution.
I have it as.
I got an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the wrong one. My fault. I'm moving too fast on the wrong one.
All right, do we have a motion second on the ordinance?
Seconds.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property identified as Zero Patterson Avenue Southwest Tax Map Number 1313125 and 2102 Patterson Avenue Southwest Tax Map Number 1313201 from S. and S. Investments LLC, needed by the city in connection with the Patterson Avenue Pedestrian Improvements Project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion among council? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item number six is the execution of the Virginia Department of Transportation's Programmatic Project Administration Agreement to permit continuance of currently funded revenue-sharing projects. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Virginia Department of Transportation Programmatic Project Administration Agreement Extension Addendum, providing assurance of the city of Roanoke's commitment to funding of the projects under the PPAA and in meeting its financial obligations under the program, providing a designation of signature authority regarding commitment of funds, and authorizing the city manager to provide an additional, any additional information, execute any necessary additional documents, and to take any necessary actions to obtain, accept, receive, implement, use, and administer the PPAA.
All right, any discussion among members of council? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Council. Just real quickly, a couple of reminders for folks, for you all, as well as those that might be joining in. So, the Liberty Trust Hotel in downtown, this is the newest hotel in downtown, has its grand opening ribbon-cutting for tomorrow. It's actually been open for a couple of weeks, but they're wanting to do official openings, so that will take place tomorrow again, as mentioned. On Friday, the Ricky Rennell Wright Court Dedication will take place at the newly refurbished courts at Washington Park. Immediately following, that's at 4:00, and immediately following that is a three-on-three basketball tournament that will also take place in that location. Of course, that tournament, I presume, is weather permitting, so hopefully, everything will go well with that. As I had mentioned in the most recent update for you all, of course, we went through our reviews by the three credit rating agencies and had all three rating agencies affirm our credit position and credit worthiness. The significance of that is, obviously, those ratings help us secure debt in order to do our CIP projects at an affordable rate. And of course, last week, we presented those, those bond, or we reviewed those bond proposals from a number of, there were a number of competitors seeking to be able to fund those projects. And based in part because of those credit rating agencies, we received the best bid on that, which are 3.3% interest rates, which is a obviously very competitive interest rate, which allows us to carry out the upcoming capital projects as we move forward with those important projects. And then finally, this evening, our local rail yard Dogs Ice Hockey Team will be playing what is hopefully not the last game of their stellar season. They are competing against Peoria in the, really, what is the national champ-, their division's championship, the President's Cup with it, and it's the best of five. Unfortunately, they've lost the first two games, so hopefully with their return here, they will see victory as well. And then they'll play one more game here if that is appropriate, and then if a fifth game is necessary, that is played in Peoria. So, certainly wish them the best as they pursue for the first time ever that cup and that award. That is all. Unless there are any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, congratulations to the Dogs. They've played very well this year and hope they can win tonight to extend it to another game and then go on. It's an uphill battle, but you never know. You never know. Item number eight is reports of committees, none. Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Item number nineteen, or item number ten, is the introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. I'll call on the vice mayor to announce the two school board trustees and move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just begin by saying that we had several really, really good applicants for school board, which made our job very, very difficult. Spent a lot of time discussing the applicants and, you know, really, really good applicants. So, I just wanted those of you to know that applied and who were not selected, that you were certainly qualified, you presented yourself well, but we could only choose two. And with that being said, I am pleased to announce that we have reappointed Joyce Watkins as a member of the Roanoke City School Board and will be appointing Mary Franny Appel to the Roanoke City School Board. And I will ask the clerk if she would not mind to read the resolution.
A resolution appointing Joyce W. Watkins and Mary F. Appel as school board trustees of the Roanoke City School Board for terms commencing July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30, 2025.
And I will second that motion.
Yeah, okay. I was about to ask. All right, is there any discussion? Oh, well, you got that. Go ahead, you finish.
Well, if anybody else wants to say anything, I just wanted to make sure that the candidates who applied, and especially the last two finalists, Mr. Ryan Bell and Ms. Kathy Cohen, Rabbi Kathy Cohen, were very good candidates. It really made our jobs very difficult and took us a couple of hours to make that decision, but those were our decisions and I would certainly encourage both and all the other applicants to apply again. Very good candidates, very good candidates.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Congratulations to Ms. Appel and Ms. Watkins for their selection. All right, item number 11 is motion and miscellaneous business. Are there any inquiries by members of council? And that's her, Ms. Price.
I just want to make a quick announcement. I almost made this announcement when we were talking about the initiatives towards gun violence prevention, but I just want to have you mark your calendars for June 25th. That will be our annual youth summit, which unfortunately we've not had in person for a couple of years. But our committee has talked long and hard about what can we do to celebrate our youth and to make certain that our young people realize that our city thinks a lot about them. You'll hear more details later, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys and our listening audience know, on June 25th, we will be at the upper level of Washington Park. And one thing I particularly want to emphasize today, we're encouraging our young people to come forth with their gifts and talents. So, if there's anyone who feels like they have a talent for singing, dancing, spoken word, whatever, they can get in touch with me. If it's family appropriate, we will have a schedule of events for our young people to present themselves. And of course, we'll have, you know, food, music, basketball, and other types of entertainment. But I think it is important that we remember that preventive measures like this are so important to make certain that our young people feel like they are included in our city. So, June 25th, mark your calendars. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. And I want to say thank you to Angela O'Brien for doing a lot of behind the scenes coordinating. So, thank you.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, yes.
Indeed. Oh, yes.
Well, thank you, Ms. Price. I remember you used to have a good piece of money in that program, which is something.
And one of the last requests before I left the first time for City Council was a leave of loan. So, thank you.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
And I said I was going to be here to ensure that that money was paid.
My partner is right here. Yes, thank you.
So, we're getting to budget discussions again. Remember, we got a new summit over there.
That's right. Our preventive measures. Thank you.
You just said preventive, but okay.
We'll have a conversation, sir. I'll explain that.
All right. Certification of closed meeting. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Moon Reynolds to make a motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public matters, business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bestpage?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. And now we will have the list of citizens who have either been appointed or reappointed to serve on the boards and commissions. And after that, if you are in support of the citizens that are listed, please vote all nominees when the roll is called. So, I'm a council member, Bestpage.
Yes, sir.
We'll place names and nominations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you said, some of these are reappointments for terms that end June 30th, so we're reappointing people to additional term that will begin July 1. In addition, we have a couple on here that are for unexpired terms where somebody has resigned, but that term runs only through June 30th. So, I'm thinking that these nominations are also to begin June 1 for a full term for whatever the term is for that particular position and not just serving from now until June 30. So, we'll start with the unexpired term of office ending December 31, 2023. The nominee is Meg Smith for the Building and Fire Codes, excuse me, that was for the Board of Zoning Appeals, for the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals. Yvonne Johnson is reappointed for another three-year term for the City of Roanoke Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Two-year term for Captain David Morris, waiving the residency requirement for Captain Morris for the, excuse me, continuing with the Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Mark Nelson for a two-year term. A reappointment, a reappointment of David Jevons for a four-year term on the Pension Board of Trustees. For the Court Community Corrections Program Regional Community Criminal Justice Board, appointment of a three-year term for Captain Diatra Muse. For the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, reappointment to a three-year term for Mary Kegley and Whitney Feldman. For the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, the reappointment of Gloria Mans for another three-year term. And for the same Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, the appointment of Brian Haynesworth for a three-year term. For the Roanoke Arts Commission, the reappointment of Betsy Whitney and Donna Davis for additional three-year terms. And John Cornthwaite is a new nominee for the Arts Commission for a three-year term. For the Roanoke Public Library Board, reappointment for another three-year term of Jane Field. For the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission, the reappointment of William Hackworth. For the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center Commission, ex officio members, the reappointment to another four-year term for Stephen Martin. For the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2022, nominee is Councilwoman Anita Price. For the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization for an unexpired term ending December 31, 2022, the nominee is Councilman Joseph Cobb. And for the Towing Advisory Board, Lieutenant Christopher Ramey from the Police Department is the nominee. And for the Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, the reappointment to another four-year term of John Francis Jr. For Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, reappointment of Annette Lewis for a one-year term and Stephen Lemon reappointment for a one-year term, and the appointment for a one-year term of Malcolm Quigley. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all the nominations that we have for today.
Mr. Bestpage.
Thank you.
Did we have one that needed a residency?
Yeah, I said that.
Okay.
Yeah. Waive the residency on the- Yeah, Captain Morris from the Police Department.
Let me ask you a question, Bestpage. Councilwoman Price is appointed for, which board was that? I didn't-
The TV board, RV TV. You know, she was on there for years. We figured she can just jump right back in.
Okay. And the term is when?
December 31. This year. The end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, which, what, Mr. Cobb was on one. I didn't make it. I thought I heard the same date.
Transportation Planning Organization. Again, those are, those are to fill the vacancies created by a vacancy on City Council that the terms ran through the end of this calendar year, December 31. And so, Councilwoman Price and Councilman Cobb are filling the remainder of those terms. And of course, we'll have to, I said, we all have to appoint somebody new January 1. Well, I guess I'll still be here in December to make the appointments, so watch out.
Yeah, December ends a lot of things, yeah. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? And if we're in favor of that, please let it be known by the shaking of all nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Price?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
All nominees.
Mr. Bestpage?
All nominees.
Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Mayor Lee.
All nominees. And thank you. All right, if there's no further business to come before the council, the regular session of City Council will be, will stand in recess until Monday, November 9th at 2:00 p.m.
December 9th.
I mean, Monday, May 9th?
November to December, yes. May 9th.
Mayor, you might want to-
You're just checking with us. You're just trying to see.
Well, obviously, I failed.
Yeah. It's been a long day, folks. All right. That now, the regular session of City Council will stand in recess until Monday, May 9th at 2:00 p.m. here in the council chamber for the adoption of the city of Roanoke's recommended fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And any other measures deemed appropriate, I'm kind of afraid to say that, but any other measures that we deem appropriate. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.